Good evening, everyone. My microphone's on. All right. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. Commission members, I'm going to do a quick roll call and then turn it over to our chair. So Patrick Carrier?
Here.
Mike Grubulas?
Here.
Scott Halston?
Here.
Matthew Hupbogner?
Here.
All right. Enes St. James?
Here.
James Rockcliffe?
Here.
Liz Sanford?
Here.
And Mike Walsh?
Here.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome. This is Enes St. James. This is the February 7th Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. The first item that we have one new business item, excuse me, in front of us this evening. It's an application for a sign. And we have someone from SignPro?
Do we want the legal notice for that?
Yeah, well, that would be great.
A legal notice for the public hearing.
Mr. Secretary, if you can do the honors and read the notice.
I thought you were going to skip right past me and go, all right. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, February 7, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. Jessiraj Anthony Palaia, application for special permit for COVID-19 testing center at 504 Main Street, C1 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting may be found on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is also online at the address on your screen or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 20th day of January 2022, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and as St. James Chair.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Let's go to new business. We have a sign application. And someone hopefully here from SignPro?
I believe we've got Tracy on the phone.
Tracy, okay. Hi, Tracy.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for hearing our application this evening. As you can your screen, this is the proposed monument. And I did clarify with Shannon that the base will be no more than 12 inches so that the overall height of the sign will be below six feet. This is, I believe, an externally illuminated sign. And it will show the five tenants, three tenants that are, I believe, signed and ready to go as soon as the buildings are ready for them, and two tenants to be named later. And if you can scroll to the next page, I think. So this is the front elevation of the building. We are showing 26 square feet of signs for the two end tenants, they're the anchor tenants, and 20 square feet of signs for the three in the center. And then we're showing the same size on the rear of the building as well. And in full disclosure, so it would be up in 12 square foot of signage for both the front and rear elevations, which we realize is more than what the allowance allows. We are hoping, and I believe Mr. Carrier is here to speak to this application as well. We are hoping to either get this approved as is or with a 50% additional allowance, which I believe can be provided by the commission.
Okay, well, it can't be, this is the Town Planner. You, it cannot be approved as is because you would need a variance. So, so that absolutely cannot be done. So, so if you're requesting the 50% variance, that's fine. It's not a variance, but the, the exception that's permitted in the regulation. How would that be executed?
I'm not sure at this point how that would be executed. I don't know if Mr. Carrier is, I believe he's on. I don't know if you would like to speak to this point as well?
It's welcome to.
Ryan Carrier?
Yeah, I can see him. I don't know.
Yeah. Can you guys hear us?
There you go.
This is Charlie from Development Planning Solutions here with Ryan. We would have to look at the numbers on the 50% to make sure that we could make that work. Otherwise, we would have to potentially go for the variance. Ryan and I were just discussing that we had some shown signs on both sides of the building at the time site plan was approved. So we'd have to just make sure that we were still within the confines of that approval moving forward.
Correct. The signage that was shown at the time of approval was compliant and was half the size. There was 10 square feet allotted for the signs at the front of the building and 13 square feet, sorry, 10 for the signs in the middle and 13 for the signs on either end. So the elevations, say one of these elevations, here we go. So it's half the size that's supposed to, so 13 square feet on your end caps and 10 square feet for your middle tenants, which was zoning compliant. That's what was approved at the time the special, or what was shown at the time the special permit was granted.
Yeah, I think it would be preferable to not go for a variance. If the commission was inclined to, to approve the additional 50%, then we could rescale our signs and, and work within those numbers.
Okay, and then that's what you're officially asking for this evening, then?
Yes.
Okay, we will, okay. Is there anything else to present on this application?
Nothing more for you.
Okay. All right. Man Chair, sorry for jumping in and.
No, no, that's correct.
If you want to.
So we're including the monument?
Correct.
And we're including the front and rear signage?
Correct.
Which exceeds?
So it would only be up, it would not be as presented. It would be the front and 50% size on the rear. Because they, so with the, the frontage of 112 square, 112 linear feet, they're allowed by right 112 square feet of building sign. Currently, as proposed, it's twice that. So they can leave the front as is and reduce the back by 50% or they can go 75 and 75. So basically, it would be a total.
When we say front, the front is.
So the front facing, so the front is facing Route 4. The front of the building is facing Route 4.
Okay. And the front, if it was left as is, it's?
112 square feet.
Okay, so that's okay.
Correct.
And the rear would be possibly?
30 and 56.
Okay.
56 square feet. And it would require a 5, 6 vote of the commission in order to do that.
And we are a commission of five, so.
So it's unanimous. They're going to have to be unanimous vote.
Okay. Commissioners, does everyone understand what we're voting on?
Well, they can go through questions.
Okay.
So everyone.
That's true. All right, let's, let's do that. You're right. Thank you.
No, that's okay. I know because this is a little
Yeah.
out of sequence.
It is. It is. All right. Patrick, you're first in line. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, this question is for Shannon. In the agenda review, it kind of goes over how, you know, we're supposed to vote on this or what we're supposed to keep in mind when we vote on this. Can you, can you just go over that for the commission?
Absolutely. So for height, size, and location exceptions that's permitted in the code, which is Article 4, Section 7L, it says where there is ample demonstration that the height, size, or locational requirements of this section are inappropriate due to topography, location of the building on the lot, or buildings on an abutting lot, or other physical features affecting the parcel or building. The commission may permit an increase of 50% in the size and height limitations specified in this section and may permit locations closer to the front property line than specified in paragraph F. Such exceptions may be permitted only upon a 5, 6 vote of the full commission.
Yeah, so I guess it would just be up to the applicant to demonstrate that, right? Is the way I understand that?
Correct, correct. And you can certainly, we can, you can ask those questions, but technically in order to be considering this, the applicant should be showing why that additional sign area is needed, whether it's topography, the location of the building on the lot, or location of buildings on a budding lot. So like, in that case, it would be impacting the visibility, right? That one building setback or recessed from another, or other physical features of the parcel or building that necessitate this request.
Okay, so I guess that would be my question for the applicant. Can that be demonstrated?
Well, I think what we would be pointing to in regards to the constraints of the site would be the placement of the building. Obviously, Route 4 is a highly trafficked road that most drivers do carry a good deal of speed through this area. So the signage on the street-facing facade, we feel is, is necessary to remain at the total 112 square feet. The signage on the parking lot or the rear side of the building is more of convenience-type directional signage. It doesn't need to be as big, but I think it does a disservice to the customer if there's no signage at all back there. Again, we want to maintain the visibility for the signs from, from the traffic perspective on Route 4. One other thing I just want to throw out is if the commission is inclined to, to approve this plan with the 50% increase, we would obviously submit new drawings to the town prior to a permit being issued so you folks will have a chance to review that before anything takes place in the field.
How far is the building from, from Route 4? I'm looking at it, but I don't have a scale.
So, that's 20, 23 feet.
Yeah, I believe it's about 25 or 30 feet. I don't have the plan in front of me here to scale off of, but it's, it's set back a little bit, but not, not in an incredible amount.
Yeah, I think it's just back, so I think it's just back off the front setback line. So if this is 23, this, this width is 23 feet, this is the property line. And then you've got a sidewalk. And this is the white line for the edge of the traveling roadway. And you can see where the curb return is. So there's, and this is the monument sign that was just shown. So the monument sign will be here approximately centered to the building and at its full size at 24 square feet. So from the, the property line, I believe, estimating using the driveway, I think we're at approximately 30 feet back. And then this is perhaps another 20, so maybe 30, anywhere from 50 to 60 feet back from the edge of the travelway.
Okay, I guess so somebody driving by would be, I guess, looking more at the monument sign, right? Is that what, that's kind of the point of that sign?
Correct. It's placed perpendicular to the travelway so that, that, that's exactly the purpose of it.
Okay, yeah, no more questions. Those are my only questions.
Thank you. I'm going to just stop for a minute, Shannon. And I, I wish I had said this before. I'm just wondering because it's changed, right, to what, the request is different than what was submitted. I'm just wondering if we should be receiving updated documents?
That's certainly within your, if you would, so the commission does not have to vote on this this evening.
Okay.
So the, the commission does not have to vote on it. The commission could say, we want the updated documents and we'll, you know, come back to, we can, this can be continued. Absolutely. There's 65 days to process this application. Does not have to be voted on this evening if additional information, if the commission would prefer additional information. That's absolutely not.
Just vote on it.
Using the proper way, the way it is laid out right now?
That's, that's, that's fine. Do we want to run through everybody?
Yeah, let's, can I get, that's my opinion, of course. I would like to get everyone's opinion. If you feel that this, we should be receiving you updated documents and plan to review and vote at the next meeting?
And we can see if anybody else has any questions?
Yeah.
These two weekends are going to be better.
He's online?
Okay, we're good.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, so hang, hang on because we'll run through everyone like we usually will to do questions. And then we can also, if there's, at the same time, you can also offer your opinion as to whether or not you'd like to hold this over from a vote standpoint.
So Patrick, thank you for your question. What is your take on whether or not we should continue tonight or move into the next meeting?
Well, I'm just stuck on that, on the criteria that we're supposed to, you know, I guess, make our decision on. No, I'd like to hear from the other commissioners and shake up my mind after that.
Okay, that's fair. All right, Mike Grubulas?
First off, I, you know, want to run through all this before I would make a decision whether or not I, I want to continue this. The, the signs on the front and the back that are not proposed are double in size from what we had approved a few years ago?
Correct.
Okay. I have no problem with a larger sign on the front of the building, you know, facing Route 4. Obviously, I think maybe the internal parking lot signs, you know, don't necessarily need to be that large. That's just my personal opinion. The monument sign along Route 4, how, how wide is that?
The panel is 72 inches wide, so six feet. So the panel itself is six feet wide. And the total height is four feet. So it's a four by six panel. So that's a 24 square feet. The address panel at the top is 12 inches high by two feet wide. And then in order to keep this height under six feet, they've committed that this base distance from the, from the bottom of the panel to the ground will be under one foot because the total sign height has to be less than six feet.
Yeah. I mean, my opinion, that's a huge sign to be put along Route 4 height-wise. Is there, how much property is there in the front between right-ofways and stuff to, if it were be able to a, a shorter side with side-by-side? Is there enough room to do that?
They'd have to, assuming this is to scale, and I honestly, I do not know if this is, if this schematic of the sign is to scale and matches because this is from two, two, two and a half years ago. I did not scale that. So this is the graphic representation of the detached sign and its location. And it was shown in a zoning compliant location. They did not have a graphic specification to show all the tenant panels at that time, which is fine because they do, it is a separate permit, which is why they're here this evening. But yes, in theory, they might have to cut the, the width of each of those panels, but I don't, I don't have that distance offhand.
Okay. I just know there was other monument signs throughout town where, you know, height is an issue. And Epicure Plaza is one that, you know, I think of where you have multiple tenants and, you know, putting a, a high sign there is nothing but a, you know, a line of sight issue. And I'd be curious if, if that was something that would be viable here to shrink the, the height of the sign and make the width larger, side-by-side panels.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike?
Nope, that's it. Just wonder if that's possible from the applicant.
Is it okay to get responsible at the end?
Well, we can do them all again because Patrick had his questions.
Okay, now let's go. Thank you, Mike. We'll continue. Scott?
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions at this point. Patrick asked the one I was really thinking about. It just, my initial reaction is it seems like an awful lot of signage for a building that's pretty close to Route 4 and pretty visible as you go by. So I don't know if it's a combination of what Mike was talking about with that monument sign, minimizing that a bit or shrinking some of the other signage. It just, it seems like a little bit much to me. It's my first reaction.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, just a clarification for me. So there's the monument side and the building signs. Are, are all of those signs sort of out of compliance? Or is it just the building signs and the monument sign is okay? Just, just looking to get a little clarification there.
Correct. The monument sign is compliant. If they, they've agreed to a base height of no greater than 12 inches. And so the height will be compliant because it's a maximum height. It reads less than six, six feet in the zoning regulation and less than 25 square feet is the zoning regulation. So they're at 24 and with a base height of less than 12 inches, they'll be under the six feet. So technically, it's zoning compliant, but the commission can certainly, as part of this discussion, ask for other items, you know, as Commissioner Grubulas was asking with respect to the, the overall height.
Sure, no, yeah, no doubt about that second part. The, the, the other part in, from the earlier conversation about changing the front or the back, again, I'm, I'm not clear on that or how, how would that look or how that works? So a little hard for me to judge. And let's, let's grant this is my first meeting here, but a little hard for me to judge here on that as well.
Okay. Thank you. All right, you got that, Shannon?
I do, yep.
All right, James, you're next.
All of my questions have been answered. Thanks.
Sure, you got it. How about you, Liz?
Just a, just a one or two little clarification points. And this is a question probably for the rest of the board. This is my first sign go-through. We have purview over height and position, but we do not have any purview about materials. Is that correct?
Correct. So material, in this particular case, the only time there's discussion about material is when you're in the Farmington Center or Unionville Center zone or if it's a historic building. So this really isn't, it's not a material. The lighting also is within the commission's purview. And they've indicated and it's shown on the drawings externally illuminated, both for the building and the ground mounted sign.
Okay. One other thing about the, the ground sign, just from the picture, and again, this is first go-through, so I want to make sure. The measurement of the height of the sign is from the ground. And is that, it sounds kind of, I don't want to be nitpicky, but it looks like the garden area is recessed from the rest of the, from the rest, you know, where like the brickets, and I'm sure this is a representation. Is the measurement from inside or outside?
We take an average height. And at the end of the day, it becomes the, the staff's responsibility to go out and, and take a look. And so at that point, when you're dealing with ground elevations, if it's plus or minus an inch or two, we're probably not. It's if, you know, all of a sudden, there's a six-inch delta, then they'll, it will come back to, to you folks for discussion. And honestly, generally, we just, it'll be required to be corrected. If it's not compliant at the time of construction, then they won't get a C out, so.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I, more information is always good for me. I, I do think that's a fairly large sign, right close to Route 4. But, you know, well, as I say, more information would probably be helpful for me.
Thank you, Liz. All right, and finally, Mike Walsh, any questions, comments?
Just comments are, I have no comment on the monument sign if it isn't compliant. I would like to see the redesign with the building mounted signage before we vote. And keeping in mind that Five Corners wasn't compliant and it's a building further back from the road. The next time the design comes in front of us, I'd just like to better understand the hardship that the owner's asking for.
Okay. Thank you. And I get, the only other question that I have, it's maybe for you, Shannon, is the businesses that are immediately around there, are they, like, it sounds, seems to me that the signage would stand out more than the businesses nearby or?
It's quite possible. I don't have, I don't have all of the, because there's a bike shop that's down and a wine shop that's in one direction.
But they're compliant, you think?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they're compliant. I just, I don't know what those dimensions are. But I, staff can certainly get that and have that information for you for the next meeting.
Okay. So we went through all the questions, thank you. We went through all the questions. I, I think that the applicant should come back.
So can I interrupt quickly? Sorry. Just to be clear, coming into this.
Sorry, hang on because we can't see who's speaking.
Sorry, this is Ryan Carrier.
Okay.
Just to be clear, when we came into this meeting, we weren't aware that we were going to need a variance to get that 50% increase. We're totally okay with keeping the, the building signage as approved. We're looking to get approval on this as soon as possible. We've got tenants that want to get in there. And so if, you know, if we're going to require a variance, then, you know, we're not interested in waiting that time. We want to get our approvals and everything else, you know, meets all your criteria, so. Is that something, would you guys vote on that with the stipulation that we keep the, the building signage as approved?
Yeah, well, it was, it was issued as part of the, the agenda review and it was shared, so prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
So this is, changes at the time of the meeting are not appropriate for the, expecting the commission to be bouncing back and forth and making these determinations. So, commission is completely your choice. Yeah, you can absolutely table this to the next meeting and request that the drawings be updated to reflect what the applicant intends to install.
That is my, I would like to stick to that. And I think several commissions, commissioners would like to see it too. I, I don't know if we need to go back. I know, Patrick, you were thinking about it. Maybe Mike too. Do we, my opinion is, this is, we need the redesign. We need this request to come back so we all know what we're voting on. It's, it's very confusing right now what has been presented.
I'm sorry, can I speak for just a second? This is Tracy Becker from SignPro. I think what Mr. Carrier was asking for was, and Shannon, I thought we had discussed this as well, that the original approval from the site plan review from two and a half years ago showed the overall signage at 112 square feet. So basically, the wall signs, front and back, half of what they are now. So I believe Mr. Carrier is saying we're willing to go back to that original design if we could get approval this evening with the stipulation that, you know, the, the commission saw that design two years ago and it is available in the documents this evening. I mean, certainly I can have the drawings revised before the permit is issued. But I think he just doesn't want to delay it even for the two weeks, you know, until the next meeting. Um, but I think he just doesn't want to delay it even for the two weeks, uh, you know, until the next meeting.
Shannon, do you think this could be done through email? I I don't know.
So, uh, may I say something? Yeah, so Patrick here, so right now, as if we were to say as approved, what's uh what's showing now is. Is, uh, it's a hundred percent. It is very confusing, I have to say that. So the, so the sign in the front is compliant. And what is shown on the front of the building now is compliant. Any additional signage in the rear of the building would add. To what is compliant, correct? By our regulations?
So based on this, so with the sign application that was submitted. That is correct. So the front, or this is actually the rear of the building where the parking is. Um, but I don't have, I didn't, yeah, both views weren't submitted, but basically it's the same. Submitted on the front and the 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 back. So it's the same signage being shown for both. So if you can mute your microphone, if you're not speaking, that would be really helpful, please.
Okay.
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the front, yeah.
So that's, so, right, so you've got a hundred and twelve square feet. This is the back, but there's another a hundred and twelve square feet looking exactly like this. On the front of the building is what's being proposed as part of the sign application. This document that I included and shared with you and also sent out with the agenda review that I sent. When I sent everything back out, this was the original approved plan back from twenty nineteen. And this shows at that time with these sketch elevations that they intended to comply. And the signage is half the size. There's thirteen square feet on either end cap and ten square feet for each mid. Mid place tenant, and that's the same for, you can see the front and rear elevation. These are are twice that. They're twenty-six for each end cap and twenty for each mid tenant. So it's. I think what they're saying is they'd agree to go back to this size.
Right.
So it would be really, it would not be every, uh, if the commission chose to consider this. Uh, this evening, it would not be, the monument sign could be as presented. With the stipulation that twenty-four square feet maximum and six feet maximum height. But the building sign signage would be simply the easiest way to do it is a hundred and twelve square feet. Of max, maximum for building signage. Whether they split it fifty-fifty is completely up to them. They could do seventy-five and twenty-five. It does not have to be fifty-fifty. Or they could choose to just put all of it all on one side. But the the building sign would be a maximum of a hundred and twelve square feet. And that would match then what had been approved. And that does not require any fifty percent increase to anything.
Okay. And so, and and the applicant is basically um saying that they would go back to the original. What was approved originally, which is half in the front, half in the back. Um, and then the monument sign, the way it is, which everything would be, would be compliant at that point. Is what I understood.
My understanding. Charlie, do you care to confirm that?
Yes, that is correct. And uh, just to add, we would uh add the stipulation that. Updated drawings need to be submitted prior to any.
Well, it's gonna have to happen anyhow, because you'll have to pull a building permit and the correct drawings will have to be uh uploaded. Um, to the building permit.
Yeah, that, just want to make sure that that's clear in this conversation.
And now one other question, the sign in the front, the monument sign, um. There are, in terms of sightline, there are. Regulations for sightline. That is not obstructing the sightline, correct? Otherwise, it would not have been approved in that location.
I I've. That is my understanding and I'm taking a look here. So. Yeah. Stop bar is here. So the stop bar is technically out in front of the sign. So we've got the sign, the orange line coming through is the property line. And based on, it says twelve inch wide wide stop bar. So it's just over the property line. Even if it's right at the property line, there's still this apron area where a car would. Inch up before getting into the travelway. And in line, even if you're in line with the catch basins at the edge. Your front of your car would be beyond the edge of this sign and should be able to see. Uh, clearly in both directions. So it it should not be a line, I hope, at this location, uh, line of sight issue. Based on the geometry shown here.
Right, and I'm sure that would have been picked up by town staff if it was, so.
Well, one would hope.
Yeah, I would think so. Um, alright, so I guess where I sit on this is. Other than, you know, the confusing part of of going back and forth, like you said, Shannon. I I don't have, I personally don't have an issue. I I I'm sensitive to the, you know, uh, timing of the tenants. Uh, and, you know, we're we're pretty much going back to what was already approved. That's basically what they're asking. So. In that case, I would not have a problem with it, is my opinion.
Thanks. So let's run through this again, commissioners. So we either have the applicant come back. To us, or we have the applicant work with town staff, provide us with the revised drawings, and we vote on it this evening. So Patrick is comfortable with um. Um, what has been presented and the applicant working with the um staff for approval? How about uh you, Mike?
Yeah, I have no problem voting tonight on on what we had already discussed a few years ago. Um, so Shannon, what did we approve when we approved the site plan? Did we approve signs on the building?
So technically, they weren't. Again, it's, it was a graphical representation showing, so the way Farmington works is there's a, you've got your special permit and site plan. But uh, they always have to come back for a separate sign permit. So, but at the time that they did the site plan and special permit, they represented. That the signage would be compliant without requiring any exception. Which is really the only way to show this and have it not have been flagged at the time when they're trying to do your special permit and site plan. You show compliant signage so that it doesn't detract from the, the focus was to get the the permit approved. But that's what was shown and that is compliant and that is the. Maximum allowable signage without any exceptions being granted.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm fine voting on this tonight. Um. What type of, uh, I should ask this before, what type of lighting is this for both signs?
There's, sorry, I went the wrong way with the zoom. Uh, so there's gooseneck shown here and. I believe the sign package had gooseneck light on the building. Yes, there's gooseneck lights. I believe the lights are actually already in. Yeah, these are, these are live pictures of a building, so those lights are already in.
Okay.
And then the um. Monument sign, because there's nothing in, this is a mock-up of some other location. But the monument sign, it looks like it's represented that there's going to be a. Um, externally ground-mounted lighting, is that correct? Could could Tracy or Charlie or somebody confirm?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, right, right. The goosenecks on the building and brown model likes on the monument.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um, I mean, I still think that's a, that's a really tall monument sign along Route four, but. Are you guys not able to do uh side by side? Is it too wide for the, for the property in front?
Uh, Charlie or Ryan would like to answer that?
Yeah, this is Charlie. I do, I believe it is too wide uh to fit on the property, uh, given the constraints of. Of the sidewalks and things that are already in place and uh the front, like setback line, obviously need to stay behind that. So, um. Now, we can take another look at this briefly, but I I I do believe that this is our best option.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. How about you, Scott?
Yeah, if we're going to go back to the original site plan, I don't, I don't have any concerns with voting on it tonight.
Okay. And uh, Matt, I know it's your first meeting, which I shouldn't have mentioned. Welcome. Uh, what's your, what's your uh? What, how how do you feel about uh having the applicant comply with what was already voted on before? Or do you want the applicant to come back?
No, 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 no worries. And hello, everyone. Nice to meet y'all virtually. Um, no, I think I'm I'm good with it tonight. Just. Sort of a question from visual perspective, right? The picture we're looking at now is the fifty percent greater, right? So will it just go, will it shrink by fifty percent? Is that how to think about it? Since. Uh, we're obviously not voting on updated picture. Just want to kind of talk that through.
Sure, so the way um, the way I would look at it from a staff standpoint, and I think. Um, it would be helpful if, when you folks go to view, vote on it. It's really, it's a maximum building signage of a hundred and twelve square feet. So. They could choose to do fifty percent front and fifty percent back. But they could do, if they felt, they they truly felt the signage at the front was more important, they could do seventy-five percent. And twenty-five percent, right? Seventy-five in the rear and twenty-five. It doesn't really matter how it gets broken up. It's only that the the maximum allowable is a hundred and twelve square feet. How they choose to break it up is completely up to them unless. You folks want to see it before, and then in which case it does have to come back to you.
No, I'm understood. And so the signs I'm looking at right now, like what, what's the square footage of those?
So these, so you're, you're right. Ideally, if they, so ideally, this is the full, the um. As shown, these are the full maximum square footage on one face, so twenty-six, twenty-six. And then the middle ones are twenty each. So if they were to say they chose to go fifty-fifty, then these would all be reduced by fifty percent.
Okay.
On what you're seeing right here.
Okay, great. Yep, that's, that's helpful. Yeah, no, I'm good to, I'm good to go back to the site plan. That makes sense.
Thank you.
I could just add something real quick. I think um, following up on the last commissioner's comments, our initial reaction would be to. Apply seventy-five percent of the square footage to the street side and twenty-five percent in the back, just so you're all clear. The direction that we're thinking, so there's no surprises when you do see the drawing.
So, so just again, back to my, I'm trying to just visualize the picture here without. Having you guys have to come back and show some more pictures, but, so is that. Would you call that bigger than the pictures I'm looking at on the screen right now or small, smaller or the same?
What you are looking at on the screen right now would be reduced to twenty-five percent of what you're seeing now.
I see.
The, the front facade on this, on the uh, the Route four side would be. About seventy-five percent of what is being shown here.
Right, because this is the, Shannon, do you have a street?
They did not, I don't have that. So this is the, both the pictures, all the pictures are from the um. From, so this, this here is the street view. I, yeah, this is the street at the front with the sidewalk. Um.
That's the street view. We just didn't get a full width photograph, you know, because we didn't want to stand in the middle of the road.
Yeah, no, I I understood. So, so this would, would come, shrink down as well or?
Correct.
Okay. Got it, I'm, I'm good.
Right, no, all good questions. Thank you. James?
Nope, I'm all good.
Okay, so you're comfortable with uh voting?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, absolutely, I'm comfortable.
How about you, Liz?
Uh, yes, my questions have been answered, so I'd be comfortable voting.
And Mike?
Uh, yeah, I'm comfortable voting on the proposed original design as it's in compliance with a hundred and twelve square feet.
Okay, so I have a question. Um. Do we need the monument sign? I know it's in compliance, but um, it is very close to a very busy road.
I believe that our, our client has been adamant about that monument being constructed, so at this point, I would say yes, we have to add it.
So you're in compliance with it, but if there is a sight line issue, I mean, it's, it is what it is or what happens, I mean?
Well, I don't, I don't perceive there being a sight line issue based on where the white line is in the travelway. So, um. Again, the sign is back, so the sign is on the property and then there's another. I'm going to say at least twenty to thirty feet. So from this red dash line out to this white, the white line is the edge of travelway. Or even here on the curb line, so there's approximately six to eight feet from the curb line to the edge of travelway. Uh, again, I'm estimating based on these dimensions that are shown here. I've got the twenty-three foot. Um, right, eleven and a half and eleven and a half is the twenty-three feet. So using that. To judge the distance, this is approximately the same width and then it's the same, this is, looks to be a little wider. Uh, there's sidewalk here at the front. So.
Yeah, I mean, it is in compliance, right?
It, it is in compliance.
Yeah. Alright, so it sounds like the majority of the commissioners are fine with the applicant complying. With what was previously presented with staff approval. And we can vote on it today.
Yeah, so if there's no other questions.
Yeah.
For our motion.
Yeah, commissioners, any last minute questions before? We have a motion in a second? Okay, we're good. So I.
Excuse me, Anas.
Yes.
One question, uh, is an alternate voting tonight and who is that?
So, no, we're good. We have five uh regular members. We, uh, the alternates will not be voting this evening.
Okay, thanks.
Thank, thank you though. Yep, thank you. Alright, so I need a motion in a second, please, for this application.
Shannon, I don't mind doing the motion, but could you, you just give me an idea of what that's, what I should say in it, just to get it right?
Sure, so I would suggest that the monument sign can be. Uh, approved as presented and the building signage. Uh, approved to be no greater than a hundred and twelve square feet in total. And all, and like, uh, external, and all signage to be externally illuminated.
Okay, so Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the sign application. Uh, by Sign Pro Inc. for fifty-four dash fifty-eight Farmington Avenue. With the monument sign um as presented. And no more than a hundred and twelve square feet of signage attached to the building. Um, and all signs be externally uh illuminated.
Okay, and a second, please.
Scott Hall stood a second.
Alright, regular commissioners, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, it's five votes, right?
Yes.
You, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Let's see here. So that's it for new business this evening. Um, the next portion of our meeting is uh public hearings. We have one public hearing as we all heard from um our secretary's notice. And let's see, we have uh before us is an application for a special permit for COVID-nineteen testing center at five oh four. May Street, C one zone. And who will be presenting, Shannon?
Well, we've got, I think, Mafaz and Steve on the line. I'm trying to get them to promote the panelists. Mafaz, are you, are you presenting the application this evening?
Uh, Steve, Steve is doing it.
Okay, well, he. Steve, uh. Steve, his last name begins with a B, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen him, or he dropped off the, there we go.
Hello?
Okay, Stephen, are you presenting the app, uh, the five oh four Main Street on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, sorry there, I, I, my computer did not work. Yes, sorry there, I, I, my computer did not work. I hope it doesn't log on to two locations, yes.
Okay, if you could, um, please state your name and address for the record and association with the application. And then please uh present uh your application to the commission, so they understand what you're asking for this evening.
Sure, my name is uh Stephen Butts. Um, you want my home address or business address?
Business is fine.
Sure, one oh two West Main Street in uh Connecticut.
I'm sorry, where in Connecticut? It cut out.
Sorry, uh, one oh two West Main Street in New Britain, Connecticut.
New Britain, okay, thank you.
So pretty much very simple, what we uh want approval for is to become a COVID collection testing site. Um, just to kinda help out the community, uh, very simple. Will not be doing the actual laboratory test there. Uh, we just take the swab from the customer, put it in an overnight cleaner and ship it to one of our labs that we partner with. We have a lab in uh Connecticut. We have a lab in New Jersey. We also have a lab in Alabama. Uh, results usually come back usually in twenty-four hours, at the most forty-eight hours. Um, I know some of the presentations said that we are going to be doing drive-throughs, but no, we are not gonna do drive-throughs. Uh, we are going to do pretty much only by appointments and certain walk-ups. Uh, we don't expect to have uh a line of cars out there. Um, just very, very simple. We're gonna have uh one person, uh, sorry, two people working at a time. We're gonna start off at hours, if we do get approved, Monday through Friday, uh, ten o'clock AM to seven PM.
Okay, anything else at the moment that you wanna share with the commission before we turn it over for them to ask questions and then to the public for questions at this point?
No, I mean, just look at your questions.
Okay, thank you. Shannon, before we turn it over, can you show us where, does that parcel has many businesses, right?
Uh, well, it's, it's one large building that has many tenants, and so,
Yeah, 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 thank you.
So this yellow um portion here of the building is where they are proposing to occupy. And I believe there's an area, so this, so it's this front corner of the building. So that's looking at a kind of a bird's eye view of it.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Awesome. All right, um, thank you, Stephen. All right, commissioners, this is our chance to ask uh the applicant any questions you may have. Patrick, we'll start with you.
Uh, yeah, I mean, um, so one of my questions is just the, the drive, it's not a drive-through, but it's a drive-up. So you're saying that some, some of the customers are gonna be able to request that you, that somebody working in the facility comes outside. Can you just walk me through that?
Yes, um, if someone requests that, uh, we'll have our, our employee come out there, obviously dressed head to toe and all the protective gear. Uh, we'll go to the customer's uh driver's side window, and we'll just do the swab right there in the parking lot, in their parking space.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a pretty quick, I mean, that's a pretty quick procedure, right? They just come outside, swab, and in they go, that's.
Correct, yes. There, I mean, the, uh, there's also a little bit of paperwork we have to fill out, you know, collect um ID, insurance, insurance information, if they didn't do it, you know, beforehand as well.
And how many, is there, do you have any gauge on how many people would actually uh choose to do it that way?
I mean, it all depends on how everything's going, you know, right now. I mean, I know we, we started this back in December. Um, obviously, back in December and January, it, it was, you know, very high peak times. Uh, we're, we're probably expecting, you know, it's, it's very hard to tell right now. Some, some locations during peak time that we've, that we've uh talked to, another part went thirty or forty a day. Uh, obviously, we don't expect that much. I mean, especially if we got approved right now. It might be just three or four a day, but you never know what will happen. Maybe the, it, it might, hopefully doesn't spike back up, but if it does, you know, it, we could get more per day. But again, everything is by appointment, so we'd never expect to have any kind of big, long line of people out there.
Yeah, cuz, cuz in here I was reading somewhere that said three to four customers per hour. Um, right, is that, is that what you guys had pretty much presented or talked to town staff about?
Ye- yes, that's the, the ma, the very maximum, you know. That, that was back, again, we gave those numbers back when the peak was happening. Right now, with COVID being down and statewide testing going down, we wouldn't see that much right now.
Okay, and even so, to, you know, four customers in an hour, you're talking one every fifteen minutes. So, you know, and I ask is like, you know, I kinda visualize like, you know, four or five cars lined up and, and people in lab suits, you know, and you could see it from the road. But no, I mean, with what I see there, it doesn't, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Mike, the rules?
Um, you know, I, I don't really have any questions per se regarding the actual applicant, other than is the building owner willing to give you reserved parking spots?
Yes.
So you know where, you know, would it be like two right on the, in the, you know, the front of that building along um Main Street? That would say, okay, this is the COVID testing drive-up, pull, you know, pull in the spot, we'll come out to you?
Yes, you know, right, right now, the, there's nobody in that front side of the building, so there's the parking in the front. Uh, whatever, whenever we need, he said we could, we can have.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I see this work at uh forty-five South Main Street, uh, unfortunately, all too often, including myself having to do that, and it's very simple process. Um, when or if, you know, the, the testing really goes down a lot, you know, what is the intention of it just to close, or?
Yes, right now, if we do get approved, you know, everything's gonna be on a month-to-month lease.
Okay.
It'll be just, it'll be closed up.
Okay, all right, yeah, uh, no further questions.
Thank you. Scott?
No, I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
No questions.
Thank you. And James?
No questions here either.
Thank you. Liz?
Uh, no, my questions have been answered. Thank you.
And Mike Welch?
Um, I heard Patrick's questions about the appointments and quantity per hour. In the introduction, you talked about a limited amount of walk-ins. And then when you stated later, you said there'd be no walk-ins. Will there be walk-ins available at the site or no?
We, probably, depending on how, what the demand is, you know, uh, right now, since demand is very low, we probably start off with some walk-ins. For example, you know, we uh, we have a call-in, we're gonna have a website. Well, so if we do see something that, all right, we don't have anything scheduled today, we would allow for walk-ins. When it, for some reason, it got crazy, we would have to, we'd have to shut that down.
Okay, no further questions.
Hi, um, I'm just, um, so I, I understand the intent, so thank you. Um, that you're gonna be offering this service in our town. I was just thinking more the parking lot. That parking lot is tough, maybe because I'm a bad driver, I don't know. But I just, I was, the whole pickup and drop-off, where more people are gonna park, I just wanna make sure it doesn't conflict with all the other tenants. So it's gonna be in the front only? Where are you gonna park, and it's gonna be marked somehow, or?
Yes, we, we were planning some um little signs, like some, like some little small sign at the front saying, park here for, for COVID testing. But as far as it is to the other tenants, it looks like it's really kinda far, like, out of the way. You know, I, I see someone less, got lost, I see when they pull in. I don't think, have to drive through the whole entire parking lot to get to our spot, so I don't see it really interfering with the other tenants.
Okay, um, I'm not sure if I agree with that, cuz I, I probably would be that person that would go through and turn around and look for parking, but that, that's okay. And then, uh, so we don't really have, well, I know it's a public hearing, but um, so we probably have neighbors or some other people.
Yeah, there's a few.
There's a few, okay. Now, the sign that uh this gentleman just mentioned, or the temporary sign, like, is that?
I, I haven't seen, so if you're, yeah, any sign that's gonna be installed will have to be approved prior to installation.
Okay, I, what I, maybe I um, I'll, I'll check, I'll, I'll write, write a couple things. What I meant by sign, um, I don't know if you have, you see those little parking lot signs, where they have like no parking or something like that, that sticks up? We don't have to, we have to have approval or something like that. We, we won't, we won't do it. It's fine.
If the commission's agreeable this evening, if it's no small, no larger than a, a standard parking sign, which it uh twelve inches by a foot and a half, or twelve by twelve, then if the commission's agreeable, then um, it can be reviewed at the staff level.
Yeah, that, I think you need some signage, in my opinion, so it doesn't conflict with the other businesses. Um, and that is the only other comment or question that I have, so thank you. All right, um, this is a public hearing. So let's see if there's, uh, there are people on the line that uh wish to ask questions or speak in favor or opposition of this request?
I believe so, they're shown, so um, if anyone, if anyone's called in to speak in favor or in opposition of the application or has any questions regarding the application, if you can raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you can be allowed to speak, so um, yeah, Deborah, quickly, if you can uh go ahead and give your name and address, and feel free to address your questions to the commission. And then the uh commission can have the, the applicant respond, please, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh. Uh, we are neighbors to the north at uh four eighty-six, four ninety-four, and four ninety-eight Main Street. Uh, we have but uh five oh four Main Street to the north. Uh, I just had a couple of quick questions. It looks like uh Stephen has addressed the six issues already with the hours of operation and what the flow will be with the three to four customers per hour. And uh I do recognize, uh, actually a comment that Madam Chair had made about uh signage. Uh, I would see where people would be confused pulling into the parking lot, and since this site it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have some signage to direct the automobiles right up to the building. Someone could easily come out, and they wouldn't interfere with the car service that is already in existence, and it also wouldn't.
Mister, Mister Quigley, hang on, hang on one second. Miss, Mister Quigley, your, your microphone's a little in and out. It sounds like there's something rubbing up against.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, that's much better.
All right, okay, I'm not sure where I was cut off, but uh, just to recap a little bit again. Um, once again, to repeat, uh, the hours of operation have been explained. Uh, you know, once again, Monday to Friday, nine AM to seven PM. Uh, there was no mention of either Saturday or Sunday operations, so I'm going to assume at this time uh they don't plan on opening up on Saturday or Sunday. Uh, they've also addressed the issues of, uh, you know, occupancy, or I should say, uh, arrival times of, uh, you know, three to four people coming per hour, and with a couple of medical professionals, uh, also being able to uh access the vehicles uh by leaving the building and, you know, walking out to their automobiles. So, uh, with that being said, uh, I was just gonna suggest that I can understand Madam Chair's comments about, you know, people pulling into the parking lot, not knowing where to go. And seeing as the facility is going to be located right up in the front of the building there. Um, I would recommend having some designated parking signs, so that they would be able to know they pull right in, right up to the building. And then they can, uh, after the testing, uh, they'd be able to leave without uh causing um any interference with the existing car service business. Or there's a dance studio with a lot of through traffic coming out from the rear of the building in and out. So, I repeat myself, once again, I would say perhaps signage would be a good idea to hopefully direct the automobiles right up to the building where they plan on doing the testing. Uh, the other question I have is, and it hasn't been mentioned, is uh, again, um, will there be any medical waste? And if so, will they have designated waste dumpsters, and where would they be located? If uh the applicant could uh address that?
Oh, yes, uh, per, per the state, um, we will have medical waste, or we're gonna have those little red containers. But that, we have to hire a medical waste disposal team that will come pick that up. So i- is nothing's gonna go into the, the dumpster there, no medical waste.
Okay, so uh, so the waste will be stored inside the building until someone comes to pick it up, to remove?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and then uh one other item I had here was, um, uh, let me see. Do you have plans on expansion, or are you guys, see how this goes and then take it from there?
Oh, no, yeah, we definitely have plans on uh expansion. Um, not anywhere else in Farmington, but throughout, throughout the state and throughout the country. Uh, we have some plans as well, Texas, Florida, New Jersey. We're already working on those as well.
All right, well, thank you very much, Stephen, and uh, you know, from uh, you know, Deborah and uh my viewpoint, uh, we feel this would work well for the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quigley. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. All right, anyone else, Shannon?
Uh, if anyone else has called in to speak in favor or in opposition to this application or just has questions and comments, please raise your hand so that you can be acknowledged to address your comments to the commission. Madam Chair, I'm not seeing any other hands raised at uh, at this particular point in time.
All right, thank you. Uh, commissioners, before I close the public hearing, anyone have last minute questions for the applicant?
I, actually, I have one. Um, in, in terms of uh parking spots, how many parking spots would you need um to designate to run this operation? Two, three?
Yeah, I would say two, I will say most three, maybe four.
Okay, so three to, three to four parkings.
Because you might have, you know, you might have one or two people waiting. I mean, you might have one or two people who are being worked on, then you might have that next customer come in a little bit early.
Right.
And then wait in the spot, so three or, three or four.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so two to three or three to four?
Three, let's say three to four.
We have enough spots there, Shannon?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
There's enough parking, it's not a, at this location, that concern of staffs at the moment.
Okay, awesome. All right, I don't hear any other questions, so at this point, I'd like to pause the public hearing on this matter. And um, at this point, commissioners, we need a motion in a second before discussing the reasons to support or deny this application. Alternates, you will not be voting, it's just, just the regular members, so motion in a second, please.
Uh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the application by Ziraj Anthrophilia um for special permit for COVID-nineteen testing center at five oh four Main Street C-one zone.
Okay, and second?
Matt Hudvagnor, second.
Thank you, nice job, uh, jumping in, Matt. All right, how about discussion? Do we wanna add anything? Excuse me.
Um, yeah, so Patrick Carrier, I mean, I figured so I would just put in the simple um motion, and then, and then I'm assuming we should attach to that motion, um, the signage. I know Shannon had spoken about maybe a twelve by twelve, or maybe we do, was that a hundred and forty-four square inches? Maybe they can go a little bigger one way or the other, um, and then maybe a number of parking spots?
So if there, if they are basically parking signs designating the parking spaces, then I think that's fine at the staff level. But if they are gonna have a sign exterior on the building face anywhere um for promoting the business, then I think that's gonna have to come to the commission. It can come back in two weeks at the next meeting, but so I think parking designation spaces and their uh size to be, you know, typical parking stall size sign, you know, the park, typical parking signs, like you would, uh, say, a handicap accessible sign um is fine. Anything larger, I think, should be reviewed by the commission.
Okay, and then, yeah, so my question is, does that have to be attached to, to the motion somehow? Or, or is, is as presented good because we spoke of all that?
Uh, a condition would probably be helpful that says, you know, status, um, what would we say, uh, signs for designated parking spaces can be approved by staff for up to four spaces?
That's it, yeah, I like that.
Okay, so, so I would have to, how do we go about that with?
So you'd amend, amend, and then, um, Matt would second the amendment.
Okay.
Unless there's anything else you folks wanna add to, if it's just the signs, then that's fine.
Okay, so, so maybe, so we'll go through the rest of the Commissioners and then do kind of like a.
Okay, sure, yeah, that, that works. So, uh, thank you, Pat. Wanna, um, make any, um, add any contingencies or?
Conditions.
Conditions, there you go.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, how about you, Scott?
I'm all set as well.
Thank you. Matt?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. James?
Good as well.
Cause that hearing's close. So technically, so technically not, so not the alternates.
Yeah, you're right. Yes, thank you. I went too far down the line. Yeah, 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 that's good.
No, that's okay.
Thank you for looking at me.
No, that's okay.
Oh, my gosh, okay, sorry. I apologize, thank you. Yes, oh, my gosh, okay, thank you. So, um, it sounds like the only condition is the signage.
Yeah.
Okay, so Patrick Carrier, I'd like to amend my motion to include the condition that signage no larger than a typical parking sign um for up to three to four spaces be allowed, um, and then, and, and discuss with town staff, approved by town staff.
Perfect, yep.
Matt Hudvagner, second.
Excellent. All right, let's do the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? All right, we're good. unanimous. Thank you, uh, Steve.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, didn't mess that up. All right, um.
I'm all set, please.
Yes, yeah, you're all set for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I, it's for some reason a rough one today for me. All right.
It's not just, it's.
Wow. Yeah, thank you guys for hanging in there and I'm sure over, um, Zoom, it I, I can't even imagine, but thank you for keeping up with us here. All right, um, Ms. Shannon, do you have any for, anything for planners report?
Uh, there is nothing for planners report, let's see.
I have a question for you. What, what is your feeling about in-person meetings? Do you think coming soon or not really?
Uh, I honestly don't know. I can check in with Attorney Di Crescendo. I know right now the, the, the last executive order allowed for the continuation of the online platform through April
Good.
of twenty twenty-two. I, my loose understanding from conversations I've had with Bob Di Crescendo was a discussion about the governor wanting the legislature to put forth, cause right now, the way the Connecticut General Statutes read, in the absence of an executive order, the meetings have to be held in person. Interestingly, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that nuance in the CGS, so. So in the absence of a change in the Connecticut General Statute through the, through legislation, the only provision to allow the continuation of an, uh, online platform is through the means of the executive order. So uh, we're waiting to see if, what happens next and whether or not we go to a hybrid meeting platform. Um, but that would be, and whether or not we have to go to a hybrid meeting platform, right? So it's one, it's, it's the may versus shall in the language. Um, so I can tell you, having done the hybrid, I, I tried hybrid twice, um, last late spring, early summer with, um, we did it a couple of times with ZBA and a couple of times, uh, with inland wetlands, I believe. And, uh, I think there would have to be a commitment in order for this to be fruitful. It, it at least half, if not more, of the commission needs to be willing to come into the meeting. Um, and if that isn't happening, then it loses um some of the robustness of the meeting and really the purpose of even trying to switch to an in-person platform. So, um, at some point, the choice may be made for us, but until, you know, if the commission had a consensus and said, hey, I, you know, we all wanna be in, we all wanna, you know, and that's when it's raining, when it's snowing, when it's sleeting, when it's, you know, unless, unless there's a school cancellation and the meetings would normally be canceled,
Yeah.
um, that we are all coming in to the meeting, then, um, because it does take at this particular point in time, we still have to have an online presence, so then I've got to prepare for the in-person element, but also have to have the IT support to have the online and to do it downstairs in the council chambers. It's another level that does require IT, one of our IT folks to be in there to set up, which is fine, and we certainly can do. But it does require a commitment on the part of, um, really the commission members to come in then.
Okay.
So.
I, it sounds like everyone wants to come in person.
I mean, if anybody has, I, I, if there's a question or comment, I'm happy to, to answer that.
And are we, okay, everyone is, all right, joining in the way we have been, or?
Is there a preference on anybody's parts to start to move to in-person?
Microbulus in person. Microbulus in person.
Scott Halsted in person. Is there a, a hybrid option where we come in, but the public portion is online?
We, so I think, um, and I'd have to check with Bob Di Crescendo, but I think once the, once the commission comes in, um, I don't know if, I don't know if there's enough executive order elements left in place for us to force that. Um, the idea, because it's about having a fair process too. And so if an applicant, if an applicant comes in to present in person to the commission and it's a public hearing, I, we have to be careful about giving the public a fair and equitable opportunity to provide comment to the TPZ in a same or similar platform.
Yeah, I guess, Shannon, I'm thinking like you all are in that room now, we would all be there together and the present, the applicants would also be virtual.
Right, I just don't know.
No, okay.
Why, I, I guess we could, I don't know the benefit of that.
Okay.
Right, so to, um, the point of being together, I guess, would be to have the applicants be able to read body language, right, have that rapport and be able to do that presentation. So I, those are certainly something that I could chat with Bob D on to try to get a better understanding as to how much latitude we would have.
And it may be just me speaking, I'm interested in hearing from the other Commissioners, and I only had two months in person before we went to this, as I think others did. I think there is something to be said for us being in the room together to facilitate conversation. It's a little clunky this way, and that, that's what I was thinking, Shannon, when I suggested what I did.
Certainly, absolutely.
Anyone else?
Hey, it's Matt, uh, Matt Hudvagner. Yeah, I agree with my fellow Commissioners. I think I'm comfortable coming in person, agree with Scott about the sort of in-person discussion versus Zoom. Um, I'd be curious about continuing Zoom. I wouldn't wanna take access away from the public and kind of shut off the Zoom aspect of it and make it only in person. Um, you know, I think, uh, we've all seen benefits of Zoom and the public access, being able to kind of watch and view and ask questions via Zoom, and I, I think that's an important part of these meetings here as well.
Understood, thank you.
Um, uh, this is Liz. Uh, I would enjoy getting together to meet people and get the in-person vibe. I don't do well sitting in front of a computer. I, I, I need to, I like the engagement.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Loud and clear.
Yep, I'll call the governor.
Start shaking things up, that's right. No, that's fine. So I'll let, um, the town manager know, uh, because like I said, it does require IT support in order to get this hybrid platform going, so that for those from the public that would wanna call in can. Um, and I'll also check with the town attorney, Orlando's attorney regarding the executive order and shall and may and where any of this, um, happens to be going, um, at the state.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, uh, for your input, uh, everyone. And, um, that's right, we have another portion of the meeting happening. The prints are available, don't forget, for our next meeting, for midpoint. It's a lot of information, um. But the town staff is here, right, for questions?
Absolutely.
Do not be shy, uh, but you definitely wanna prep for this one. It's not a public hearing.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Correct, yeah, so the public hearing is, was finished in December of twenty twenty, when the master plan and zone change were landed. They finished with inland wetlands this summer. Uh, they finished with architectural design review. We actually got the letter from architectural design review for the second submission, um, and quite positive. So, um, town staff should, we're hoping to finish our review, our technical review of the documents this week and get comments out to the applicant um with the intent of starting the meeting on the twenty-third. And yeah, just as, uh, Madam Chair indicated, we're here, so as you're going through stuff, if you have questions, you can feel free to reach out. We're happy to clarify, and if it's something that we think is that the entire group needs to know, then we, we share, we sanitize it. I take all, I take all identifying information off and I just put it out so that everybody gets the information, so you don't have to, you know, don't be shy about asking a question. We'll, we'll get the questions answered so that everyone's clear on what you're, what they're looking at, um, and understands the application. Okay.
All right, good. All right, uh, before we, uh, go approve the minutes, any questions for Shannon? We're good? Okay, all right, so the, the final piece for the town plan and zoning portion, we need a a motion and a second to approve the minutes from January twenty-fourth, please.
Uh, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second?
Scott Halsted, I second.
Ooh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We're good. All right, so this portion is, uh, we're adjourning this meeting at eight twenty-four.
Correct, and then we've got our aquifer protection.
Yeah. All right, that's always, let's see, you have the agenda?
I do, I have the agenda up on the screen.
All right.
And I'm gonna do something real quick, so. Turn on this. It's gonna work. Uh, there we go, here's my aquifer areas. Okay. Start, start here. Everyone can see the town map with, uh, all the yellow parcels and the aquifer areas showing?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, thank you. Okay, so real quick, so I'm going to kind of do the Reader's Digest version. Um, and then if anyone, I'm happy to answer any questions. So, the Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission also acts as the Aquifer Protection Agency. And we have three aquifers in town. The FIP Aquifer, the Sand and Stone Aquifer, and the Charles House Aquifer. And if I come back here, this is the FIP, this is the Farmington Industrial Park, Park Aquifer that we share with the town of Plainville. The rest of this is loops down in some interesting configuration in Plainville. This is the Sand and Stone Aquifer up in the heart of the, the town where we've got Dunning and all the excavation that's, that's taken place up and around that area. And then the Charles House Aquifer is skirting just here at the upper northwest corner of the town, um, and this goes out into Avon, and it also goes out into our neighbors in Burlington. The state of Connecticut um requires the towns to designate aquifer protection, uh, agencies, so we designated TPZ as the agency. Um, the boundaries are set by the Connecticut DEP, and we are given this information. It comes in digitally, so there's really no question as to the um, the location and accuracy, so these are all set. These, this boundary, the FIP Aquifer was, uh, set in twenty, uh, sorry, two thousand it's either four or eight, uh, I think it's two thousand eight. Thank you, this, uh, the Sand and Stone Aquifer was in two thousand fifteen, it was the, the area was adopted, and the Charles House was in two thousand eighteen. So the initial registration, town staff, when these come through, town staff had to review um, all the uses in these areas. There is, uh, if it's a residential property and residential use, it automatically comes out, there's no registration required. Any, uh, business use has to be re, uh, reviewed against a list of twenty-eight regulated activities. And these are activities that are defined in the Aquifer Protection Regulations, and they're activities that are defined by the state of Connecticut, such things as, uh, car automotive washing, um, dry cleaning, uh, crematories, uh, woodworking is such as using varnishes and, and any other heavy stains and minerals. Car detailing and auto bodywork, uh, car engine repair, um, machining and the machining oils and lubricants. And so these properties, and there are some, these, they were, had to be registered, and they are allowed to, in essence, be grandfathered, and so they can continue with these activities in the aquifer. And these have to be reregistered every five years, so that's where we are this evening, is reregistering. We have two in the FIP, which is the southernmost one on the Plainville border. There is one, uh, at eighteen fourteen Newbury Avenue. H and H Refrigeration, uh, for their renewal Trump, uh, at one Johnson Avenue and one eleven Hyde Road, it's their entire campus for their, uh, reapproval. A Sand and Stone Aquifer, again, is up in the center area, is one oh five Brickyard Road, um, for Dunning. And then, uh, one sixty-four, one sixty-six Brickyard for, um, excuse me, DP Concrete, it's Farmington Ready Mix. And then for the Charles House, it's one sixteen River Road, John Callahan LLC, um, for his corporation, and, uh, this one is, um, uh, fertilizer and, uh, really fertilizer for lawn, lawn maintenance. So, that's what's before us this evening for re, these are all reregistrations, um, and they're all ready. We've, staff has reviewed the applications. There has been no significant changes with any of these. Many of them are probably businesses that you're familiar with. Um, I am happy to answer any questions. Um, and what I'm looking for this evening, and they can be done as a block, it could be done as one approval. If, um, the commissions agrees, then they can be, uh, approved me to, uh, complete the reregistrations. There's documentation that we do at the staff level, and then it goes out to the, um, the owners, the state of Connecticut and, uh, Connecticut Water uh, and Department of Public Health, so they all have to be notified regarding the reregistrations.
So, so we're voting to accept the registration renewals?
Correct.
Okay, and we can do it as a block or by?
Correct.
As of her.
Yeah, you can, yes. Yep, and I can answer any questions, um, uh, that anyone may have, if there are. that anyone may have. If there are any questions, I'm happy to do so.
Any questions for Shannon?
Not for me.
Mike, I guess I'll just go through, Mike?
Yeah, no questions. I'm good to move forward as a block to vote on.
Scott? Any questions?
Sorry, I was muted. I agree with Mike. I'm willing to vote as a block as well.
Okay, how about you, Matt?
I'm good with the block, but just one quick question, and maybe I missed in the packet. Has anything substantially changed from the last registration to this registration?
No, there is, there is nothing. So all the businesses are continuing to operate as they did for the original registration. And they all have, there's best management practices that need to be in place. They all have their material management plans in place. Many of these businesses have other recording, other reporting requirements that they are obligated to directly to DEEP. So this is one of many obligations that they have.
Understood. Okay, thanks.
James, do you have any questions for Shannon?
No questions.
And Liz?
No, sounds good. I'm ready to vote as a block. I think that's best policy, best plan.
Okay, and then Mike Walsh, any questions? Okay. All right, so it sounds like we want to do this as a block. Who would like to make a motion and second?
How do you make a motion as a block?
You can just say, I would, you just say the that you're approving the reregistration of the FIP Aquifer registration, Sand and Stone Aquifer, and Charles House Aquifer, reregistrations as presented. That's fine.
Okay, so they have no addresses, just Okay, Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the renewal of the registration for the FIP Aquifer, the Sand and Stone Aquifer, and the Charles House Aquifer as presented.
Second?
Scott Halsted, a second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. You are all set, Shannon?
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.